The Columbus City Council meeting for February twenty first, two thousand twenty-three will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, Nebraska Revised Statute eighty-four dash fourteen oh seven. The current copy of this meeting act is posted in the, in our room here. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley.
Here.
Augustine Schulte, Barr, Heimer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Lor.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you, Madam Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright scars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. If at any time during our meeting this evening, anyone would like to come before us and address any item on our agenda, we'd ask you please come forward, give your name, your address, and we'd ask that you keep any comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item four A, minutes of the February sixth, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting. Item four B, quote from Kidwell, and the amount of ten thousand five hundred and nine dollars for additional phones for the community building. Item four C, quote from Downey Drilling Incorporated, and the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars for treatment and inspection related to the water production well number two. Item four D, quote from USA Blue Book, and the amount of thirteen thousand one hundred and ten dollars and sixty-two cents for replacement of a UV spectro photometer for the Public Works Department. Item four E, quote from M and M Trailer Sales, and the amount of fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars for trailer for the Public Works Department. Item four F, Northeast Nebraska Area Agency on Aging for the two thousand twenty-four Detailed Plan of Operation and Budget, and application for funding for the Columbus Senior Center. Item four G, resolution number R two three dash two seven, approving the request of the Antique Tractor and Gas Engine Show to camp overnight in Pawnee Park Friday and Saturday. June ninth and tenth of two thousand twenty-three, the Board of Parks Commissioners recommends approval. Item four H, resolution number R two three dash two eight, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. Item four I, finance department reports, and item four J, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and Council, is there anything you'd like removed from consent status?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion approved. We move on to public hearings.
Item seven A, public hearing, application of Shady Lake Development LLC for final plat and development agreement of Merlin's Edition, which is southeast corner of Highway eighty-one and sixty-third Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing? I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Motion a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven A two, resolution number R two three dash two nine, approving the final plat, development agreement, and bringing said addition into the corporate city limits.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-nine be approved.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution R two three dash two nine. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven B, public hearing, application of Mary Peterson for final plat and development agreement of Peterson Edition, twenty-fifth Street, east of East Fourteenth Avenue.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, remove the public hearing be closed.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven B one, resolution number R two three dash three zero, approving the final plat and development agreement.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution number R twenty-three dash three zero.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution R two three dash three zero. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven C, public hearing, intent to create a downtown business improvement district, general vicinity of area between Eleventh and Twelfth Street to the area between Fifteenth and Sixteenth Street from Twenty-first Avenue to Thirty-third Avenue, and appoint a business improvement district board.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing? I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Motion a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven A one, public hearing, determine whether Merlin's Edition should be included within the corporate city limits. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, move the public hearing be closed.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven A two, resolution number R two three dash two nine, approving the final plat, development agreement, and bringing said addition into the corporate city limits.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-nine be approved.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution R two three dash two nine. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven B, public hearing, application of Mary Peterson for final plat and development agreement of Peterson Edition, twenty-fifth Street, east of East Fourteenth Avenue.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, remove the public hearing be closed.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven B one, resolution number R two three dash three zero, approving the final plat and development agreement.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution number R twenty-three dash three zero.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution R two three dash three zero. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven C, public hearing, intent to create a downtown business improvement district, general vicinity of area between Eleventh and Twelfth Street to the area between Fifteenth and Sixteenth Street from Twenty-first Avenue to Thirty-third Avenue, and appoint a business improvement district board.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Yes, sir, please.
This will be a bit of a strange speaking against, but Scott Miller, twenty-two oh four, Fourteenth Street, Columbus. Speaking on behalf of Columbus in Action, Columbus Innovation Center, Sampson A and Sampson Green Solutions. We had a discussion, and we thank Gene for coming out and talking to our group. That was very helpful. I have a few questions. First, who's responsible for allocating where the funds goes, the city council or the board?
The Downtown Business Improvement District Board.
Okay. And as a group, we're very supportive of downtown, and we're supportive of the concept of the BID as well as how it's going to be valued out. The only concern we express as a board, and we mentioned this to Gene, is that we would like to see a sunset provision on it, like four years, and then have an intentional reevaluation of it at that time. We feel that way, it brings some accountability to the program, and hopefully creates that motivation to keep moving forward. Thank you.
Any other comments against this public hearing?
Gary Sharman.
Go ahead, Gary. No, go ahead.
Gary Sharman, twenty-eight twenty-nine, Timbridge Drive. I own Gas, Annie Funeral Home. I'm not, I'm not opposed to what you guys plan on doing downtown. In particular, a few things, yes, but no. I'd just like to be pulled out of the area. I do not see my area over here being anything that you guys are going to be helping with. We're in the very, very edge of it. I still have gravel alleys compared to everybody else. Snow removal in my area, the snow was thrown up on the sidewalks on the east side of the property, which makes it very difficult to move. And I don't think that this is going to be a benefit to my business at all. So I just assume be pulled out of that area. I'd also be curious, you guys sent out postcards for survey, what the results were on that too.
I think what we'll, I think what we'll do, Gene's coming up, I think what we'll do is if, you know, when there's specific questions that can be addressed, we'll address them at that point. So we don't wait until the end, and Gene, I would say please do that and maybe sit closer to the front.
Gene Van Iveren, planning and economic development coordinator. We sent out two hundred and thirty-two mailings to property owners that would be in the district. Of those, sixty-one came back no. And in order for the BID not to move forward, at least fifty percent of those would have needed to come back as a no to just automatically kill it. So, and that's per state statute.
How many came back yes?
We got thirty-four back yes, and then one came back undecided. We had several that came back with questions. Majority of the questions were how long was the tax going to be in place? They questioned some of the projects, who got to set the priorities for the project. There was some accountability questions as far as what expertise the board had in deciding what projects moved forward or in handling any kind of revitalization whatsoever. And they just kind of wanted more details about the projects and how much the cost was.
How many single-family dwellings are in the area?
We didn't send out because of the fact that the board exempt, was going to exempt those. Those mailings did not go out, but I believe, if I remember correctly, there were, I want to say either forty-eight or fifty-eight.
So those forty-eight are, they're not included or they're exempted out of the?
They're not included in the two hundred and thirty-two.
Correct. And we did not send notices to any of the churches. Anybody that is exempt from paying property tax did not get one. So the churches, the utilities, the county buildings. The cities, the city stuff.
Of, of the total number of responses, what percent of the assessed valuation are yes?
So the way all improvement districts work, print is a no response according to state statute is, is an affirmative. You have to say no if you're against it. So percentage-wise, sixty-six is no.
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one percent, excuse me. So the balance of those are, according to state statute, considered a yes. I don't know the valuation of those. We didn't correlate total value.
That's what I'm trying to do, is correlate the valuation with the yeses.
Of the sixty-one, we don't, we don't know that answer right now.
Would that be something that would be possible to obtain?
Absolutely. To what end are you looking to pull out?
I'm just looking to see, of, of the people that are paying the taxes, are they affirmative? And I can tell that by the assessed evaluation and yes. If the yeses, if these thirty-four yeses account for eighty percent of the assessed evaluation, that gives me a pretty strong feeling that the folk are for it. On the other hand, if these thirty-four yeses represent twenty percent of the valuation, then that's a pretty good indication that they're not for it.
Understood, thank you.
You follow where I'm?
Yeah, I have a spreadsheet where I have everybody's valuation, I have what everybody's assessment would be and how they voted, so it'd be really easy to figure that out.
That's, that's just great, super. Thank you very much.
I have a question too. Those that did not send their postcard or return it, did you contact them or get any feedback from them at all about what their interest was, yes or no?
No, not, well, there was a few that I talked to on the street. Usually when you send out mailings like this, they're, if they don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, they usually don't even bother sending in. It's kind of like taking any kind of a survey. And that's why I believe that the state looks at, you know, somebody who doesn't submit theirs as being an affirmative because they don't have strong feelings against it.
Okay, thank you.
I know, one of the comments or questions I had heard, Gene, from others is where, where did you generate the list from? And it actually comes from the assessor's office?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, if you'd, stay close, please. All right, yeah, Bill, please.
William Curtinbach, forty-nine oh seven, Thirty-seventh Street. I own property within the proposed district at thirteen fifty-nine, Twenty-sixth Avenue. And I'm just going to pick up where we left off. Sixty-one percent of the responses that you received were against it?
Sixty-one of the two hundred and thirty-two.
Which is twenty-six percent.
What percent of the responses that you received were for and against?
So as we stated previously, according to state statute, a no response.
I'm not asking what according to state statute. I'm asking according of the responses that you did receive, how many were for and how many were against?
We had thirty-four yeses, sixty-one no's, and one that didn't, undecided.
So not quite two to one against of the ones that you received, is that correct? So almost, it was almost two to one in the negative for the ones that you received? And, and you're saying state statute says if you don't receive a response, it's assumed to be an affirmative response?
They use that on the street and different districts every day, so.
That's quite an assumption, that if you don't respond, you must be for it. Don't you agree?
That's a state assumption.
I understand, I understand, but just, just because the state statute says that, that doesn't mean it, it's going to be automatically killed. But I think it's something you need to take into consideration in deciding if, if you're going to create this district. Right? I mean, you're not bound by the state statute to assume that these are all affirmative votes.
I guess my thought to that is, if this was important enough for them to say no to, they would have sent their card in. Would they not have?
And I'm one of them that didn't send it in. You know why?
Why?
Because I wanted all the information available before I made my decision. That's why I'm here. I thought that we would have the proponents come in and explain why we need this. Every legislative, legislative hearing I've been to in the past, and I've been to a lot of them, proponents always go first. They go in, they, they sell their pitch. They make, this is why we need this. I haven't heard anything from a proponent tonight. That's why I was here. I wanted to hear from the proponents, and I haven't heard anything.
The reason you haven't heard is I asked for those opposed first. And, and so they, I, when anyone else that doesn't want to come up stops coming up, I will then say, anyone for this public hearing?
Can we respond then after that?
We, we will to an extent. We're not going to get into a tit for tat today.
Anyway, that's, that's why I came here, because I wanted to hear from the proponents. Why do, why do we need this? I know for, you know, we've been through this before, you know, we did the, I don't know how many years ago it was, twenty years ago where we did the lights and the street signs and all that, and the bullnose intersections, all that. And, you know, that was nice, but it, it didn't do a damn thing as far as improving the downtown businesses. All it did was get in the way of the snowplows, if you wanted to ask me. I know that what they're, from what I know so far, it won't do a bit of different, it won't be of any benefit to my business. Where it, this is, the way I can see it, is this is kind of the boutique type of shops that need traffic coming in off the street. Would benefit from this, but as a professional office, it wouldn't do me any good whatsoever. And if you look downtown, there's a lot of professional offices. I know next door to me, I got Capstone Realty. Are they going to benefit? I don't see how. On the other side, I have Insurance Services of Columbus. Are they going to benefit? I don't see how. You know, the bars, the restaurants, the boutique shops, they may benefit. But this is kind of the libertarian in me coming out, but the way it looks to me is that this is an effort by some people to benefit with other people's money. And I have a real problem with that. So from what I, from what I have right now, and like I said, I came down here to get full information, more information before I make my final decision, but from what I, from where I see right now, I'd have to be against it.
Bill, I just, I, I've just got a general question, because this has been brought to us because there's been meetings, you know, just, there's been homework done. Have you gone to any of those?
I didn't even know they were being held.
That's why I'm asking, that's why I'm asking. There, there have been information meetings, and that's what some of this is all gathered from. And, you know, maybe there's some issues there that we need to address to, you know, why you weren't aware and what you didn't hear about. You know, I'm just, I'm just trying, I'm not, I'm just trying to play the devil's advocate here. If there's information that you didn't know about, did we get it to you as we should have? I'm just, I'm asking, and I asked some questions about how the mailings went out, you know, and who did find out. So, you know, I, I mean, I hear your concern about not knowing what's going on, but I also know there's a handful, there's, there's a good group of people that have gotten together to do something.
I understand that, and I, I was unaware of these meetings. But, you know, I've, I've looked at some of the, some of the things that they have proposed, the pictures and things like that. I recognize the alley. It's, it's, you know, thirty feet north of my office. It has a nice brick pavement. That won't work. There's trucks going through there all the time. That won't last a year. You know, you got these, what do they call it, street art? That'll last till the following, you know, last till one winter's over and it'll be gone. You know, planting trees and things like that, that may be appropriate, that'd be nice. I got no problem with that, but I know my neighbors got a concern with it because a lot of those buildings are downtown are really old. You get some roots growing through, I mean, they'll go right through those basement walls. And, you know, but in, say, in the public parking areas, like where the depot used to be, which have never gone, but it's gone, places like that, put some trees in there, that'd be great. You know, because what is it now? Nothing. But, you know, some of these other things, they, and like I said, the overall project, I don't see where we would benefit. And many of the other businesses downtown wouldn't benefit from it at all, but we'd be paying for it. So I'd like to have the opportunity to respond once we do hear from the proponents, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions? Good.
Joe Wemhoff, forty-five oh eight, Twenty-third Street. I own the properties on Thirty-third Avenue, Wildflower Pastries, the lawyer's office, the accountant's office, the boutique, the pet groomers, and me too. It ain't going to benefit me a bit, and I pay an astronomical amount of taxes on those buildings. If I get assessed for this, this is going to increase my taxes just a little under eight hundred dollars a year. And what I'll have to do is pass it on to the renters. I try to keep the rent down, you gotta leave some meat on the bone for them, you know, running a business isn't easy. You know, and the other thing is that alley, and I, and I've talked to the city at least three times on that alley, between Thirteenth and Fourteenth, and Thirty-second and Thirty-third. And I had a lady Friday tell me she won't even go back out of it right now because the potholes are so deep. And then coming into the alley, I asked a guy from the city if they could put a little concrete in there once. They said that costs a lot of money to pour that approach up in there. I said, you waste more money, more concrete when you're pouring these drain boxes for the storm soars, what they have left already dump on the side of the street. And you tell me that that's going to cost too much money? They very seldom grade it. If they don't want to run the grader through there often, then blacktop it or something so they don't have to go down there and do that. But that's the reason why I can't see paying this assessment, because for me over there, just like he said, it isn't going to help me one bit. So that's, that's my complaint about it. So if anything, take me out of the area, you know, just cut me out of that zone so I don't have to be raked into something that's going to be done way down over here. Okay?
Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
My name is Joe Marxmar. My address is twenty, or excuse me, forty-six, Eighteen Thirty-first Street. I own the building at twenty-seven, Twenty-four, Thirteenth Street. I am one of the people who didn't get the card sent in. Why? I, I don't think I got it, and if I did get it, I must have thrown away, didn't see the paperwork to send the card in. the overall plan of this development, you know, I wasn't aware of it. I, I would've liked to been able to be a part of it, I am not totally against any of these things, but I just do not understand where it is going to help my business, or the other business that I own in the same building. We are a nine to six, it's just not something that I see that's going to affect my bottom, it's gonna affect my bottom line negatively, it's not gonna affect it positively. And I guess that's my whole point of being in business is I want a good bottom line, not a poor one, so.
It's a good reason to be in business.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address us? All right, anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Hello, Joshua Johnson, three, thirty-nine zero seven fifty-third Street, six-eight six oh one. Uh, I am here to pe-, speak in favor for the, the downtown improvement district. Not because I'm a member that's listed as the initial three-year term, but, um, I think it goes back a little bit even further. Uh, I came back to Columbus, uh, it took about eighteen years after I graduated, I've been back for three years. Since I've been back, Colum-, downtown Columbus looked exactly the same as when I left. Um, from when I got back, I started working with Envision Columbus, uh, Rural Prosperity of Nebraska, and several other organizations. I'm figuring out, how can we keep youth in Columbus? What can we do to continue, continuously stop the brain drain like myself, who came back because there was a business for me to come back to? Um, if that wasn't here, I wouldn't be here, I would not come back to Columbus cuz there would be nothing for me to, to incentivize myself to come back. So what, what does the youth say? Um, youth, uh, when I left, would, would be saying the complete opposite of what it is today. Today, what do they want? They want safety, they want security, they want good schools. They wanna know they can walk up and down the streets at night. Um, when I left, I wanted to go party, right? That's what I wanted, uh, and there was none of that, I mean, there's plenty of bars in Columbus. Um, you know, so, so what they're looking for and what they're, what is changing is, uh, they want opportunities for where safety nets can grow. I think we started to see it with, uh, uh, the community center that's being built, along with, uh, the children's museum, the library, the multicultural center, the arts center, uh, the renewal of looking at the park. What can it be? Can it be something more than memorial? And I think it has to tie the whole area in. Um, and let's not face it, uh, there, you know, I represent Columbus Bank, Columbus Bank had like similar professionals. We're not gonna benefit from foot traffic from that sense, banking as a whole has changed, it's all on your phone anymore. Um, however, you know, we can't just think for ourselves, we have to think for the community as a whole. Because as for businesses, the communities it's, that the businesses serve are only gonna be as good as what the community itself is. Is it thriving, is it not thriving? So it's kind of that internal circle of life, we're only, only gonna be as good as the community it is. Um, I think, you know, a sunset clause isn't a bad idea at all, I, I actually entertain that. Um, and I think, uh, Mr. Kurtenbach has said some things as well, um, Mr. Wimhoff as well. I like, uh, your, you know, what, what are the buildings, you know, Columbus Bank owns three buildings, we're taxed assessed at three. We're not like First National owns a city block, but, um, you know, the, the assessment value is gonna benefit, but we look at it as, how, how can we holistically attract and retain better talent into this town, not just for ourselves, but for future generations? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak for this public hearing? Without that, I would ask, uh, to close the public hearing.
Well, unless Mr. Kurtenbach had.
Um, well, Mr. Kurtenbach, did you wanna rebut anything that, I'm sorry, yeah, I-
I haven't heard anything that would change my mind.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Well, we, we wanted to offer, not, not to change your mind, but if you wanted to say anything, all right? Well, close the public hearing, then we can have a discussion.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna close, all right.
I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Oh, wait just a moment, please. Uh, if we close the public hearing, can it be reopened?
Well, I don't know why we'd wanna reopen the public hearing.
Um.
We're gonna have discussion on what we'd wanna do next.
Yes, but will we be able to have public input to that discussion?
Yes, public, we could have- Go ahead, no, I mean, Neil's gonna address that.
Print, this would, this would come back to the city council and actually to the downtown improvement board for further discussion. So what you're doing tonight is, is voting on the intent to establish one and making the board members authorized to do that. We'll get them a draft ordinance that'll lay everything out, and there'll be discussion there, and then it comes back to you guys to vote on as to approving of the ordinance itself. So there, there, so there's, so there's, there's, there's gonna be more here.
Preliminary?
Yeah, this, this is the, this is the first, this is the first step.
It's just basically saying we're giving, we're giving them permission-
To continue to the next step.
As Mr. Johnson was talking, I actually highlighted a note I had here that says, at this meeting, we are not approving the assessment or amount of assessment, or the exact boundaries. Tonight's is a resolution to establish the district, appoint the board, and move forward after that with all the rest that needs to happen. So, there is nothing set in stone tonight, other than we're saying this can move forward with further discussion. Which I think then would go forward with some of these concerns that have been brought up about where the boundaries are. Is there room to make some changes? How did people hear about the meeting, cuz they're gonna have to have a couple of meetings, let's make sure they get the word out properly. Those are the things that would come from anything moving forward. Tonight's resolution is to ju-, or tonight's public hearing, and then what would follow is just to get us to that, the step that allows us to do the next step.
I, I'm very concerned that we need to have dollars talking here. And dollars, from my point of view, are assessed evaluation. And do we have the people with the dollars behind the project? If we don't have the people with the dollars behind the project, we're just, uh, we're, we're, we're not doing it.
As we said earlier, Print, we will gather that information, and we will, if the resolution is approved, we will take that information to the Business Improvement District Board, which will be finalizing a res-, a draft ordinance that will come back to the city council for consideration. All of the input tonight, your comments will all be considered by the BID board in creating that draft ordinance.
All right.
And then that ordinance will be read three times at three separate city council meetings.
By number.
Yes.
I just have one question. I don't know, maybe I'm thinking of this backwards, but why would we create a board without having the resolution, you know, without having this bond or ta-, extra tax passed? It seems like a waste of time to have a board if you don't have a-
The state statute requires what we're doing.
Okay, that's, I, I mean, I have got no idea, that's why I'm asking, it just seems counterintuitive.
Can I just ask a question, um, who, who the board-
Can you come to the podium, please?
Gotta pay your dues.
You gotta get on TV.
Great, I didn't dress up for it.
Um, Kathy Kurtenbach, um, my husband is Bill, we own property downtown. Um, who the board is, there was never a discussion of who the board is.
It's the next item, I'll read all the names.
Okay, great, great, thank you.
So I guess I just wanna clarify, when we vote yea or nay on this public hearing, we are just simply saying we are giving the community, the downtown business people, permission to create a board.
What, the, this item that we're on right now is just closing the public hearing. That's what we're voting on right now. The next item, item seven C one, is a resolution creating the Downtown Business Improvement District Board. Appointing members of that board. That board will be responsible for hearing this feedback, adjusting the draft ordinance according to how they think it needs to be adjusted based on this feedback, and then bringing it back to city council for three readings.
When we vote to, uh, for the resolution, we are not voting for a tax.
Correct.
We're just voting for a group of people to assemble as a board.
Yes.
That's what we're voting for.
That board have the opportunity to say no?
Yes, they have every opportunity to not vote to, send this back to you.
Okay, that's, that's-
And like I mentioned, we will do our best to see that that board works with a mailing list or whatever to get notification to all of you that said you didn't, and if you get it and maybe don't read it, it, then that's shame on you, okay? But I mean, I think it is important to find a way to get accurate information out. We, we know is, is one of the, the biggest challenges we have is how to communicate with people. So often we hear, well, I didn't know that, yet we've talked about, you know, it, because, because of today's society and how we communicate. We don't, everybody doesn't read the paper, everybody doesn't listen to the radio, everybody, you know, where do you get your information? So yes, there have been issues where we, we've done what is legally required, but have we done enough?
Plus some.
Oh, plus some, but have we done enough? I mean, I, I can't sit here and say, yeah, if you didn't get it, but I do also know that we did do mailings. And I can't force you to read something that comes in the mail all the time. So I, my point is, we wanna do as good a job as we can to inform and to educate and to hear you. And that's what this is all about, to try to hear you. And I think we have heard you, I think we've heard some very good comments tonight that I know have to go back for further discussion. And that's what we wanted to get out of this, is to be able to have further discussion. All right. We have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Seeing that, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Oh, I have, do I have to, um, make a motion to abstain, uh, allow Mr. Jablonsky to abstain from this, or from the next item?
That would be on the resolution. This is just closing the hearing.
Not from the public hearing.
Not according to the agenda, it says the public hearing, we need to allow him.
Technically, won't it be item seven C one?
Yeah, I was just in there, I, I didn't wanna-
So let's vote on closing the public hearing, and then Mr. Jablonsky can request to be abstained from the resolution.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes to close the public hearing.
Item seven C one, resolution number R two-three dash three-one, approving the intent to create a downtown business improvement district and appoint the following to the Business Improvement Board, Barbara Duffy, Josh Johnson, and Lindsay Thompson for three-year terms, Mary Nefler, Robert Bob Stahura, and Dick Thule for two-year terms, and Kristin Stock, Kevin Anderson, and Corey Reader for one-year terms.
Mr. Mayor, I need to abstain from this agenda item because I have a conflict of interest.
Council members, I move that the council member, that council member Jablonsky be allowed to abstain from voting on this agenda item, and to suspend the city council rules requiring him to leave the council chambers during the discussion and vote on this agenda item. We need a second on that, please.
Second.
All right.
We have a motion and a second to allow Councilman Jablonsky to abstain, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of resolution number R twenty-three dash thirty-one.
Second.
Need a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution, uh, R twenty-three dash thirty-one. Any discussion, councilman?
We have a, a type of area in the, uh, it's not Anderson, it's Kevin Johnson.
Oh, for a board member? Correct.
Kevin Johnson.
You mean Josh, not Josh, but Kevin? Down on the bottom, Kevin Anderson.
Yep, that's correct, we will correct that.
We will correct that one.
I, I noticed he didn't, so maybe he's hoping. We will make that, we will make that correction, thank you, councilman.
I have, I, I have some situations that I wanna bring out, as far as the, uh, process. There are some things that I, that I've seen that, with the pictures, and one of them is, is Frankfurt Square is a park. And as far as I'm concerned, that is a city park. And I don't feel that the downtown business people should have to put any of their funds towards that park. It is a public park, and it's used by the public, and so consequently, I will fight tooth and nail not to put it on here. Because I think that this is a city, what the city can do is, to give, this has the opportunity for the city to give to the downtown people. Is to do the maintenance, you know, upkeep, repair, whatever has to be done. The other thing is, is the parking. And I don't think we need to let the business people downtown have to worry about parking where the, uh, shall I say, on Twelfth Street. Uh, if we wanna do some blacktopping or whatever, I think that is a city project, that should not be proposed. Uh, I think the boundaries are too big. Uh, the people that are being assessed on the outer outside of the boundaries, I feel are, are probably at a disadvantage of, of any assistance, of, of trying to get some help with, with anything that might happen. And one of the other things I, I don't, don't know is, when we came up with this list of things that were going on, who came up with that, with that list?
It's state statute, what's allowed.
No, the, the-
That's not state statute.
What's allowed in the district is what I was referencing.
I think it means some of the items that they're talking about doing.
The items that was listed that we can do.
I think they came from the, the group meetings that they had.
The downtown planning session.
Downtown planning session, okay. I, that, that I wasn't aware of that.
There was multiple over a year, and they were all in our activity report over the last year and a half.
Something else that I, that I think we may wanna look at, and I am, I agree that we need to have a sunset clause. Definitely need a sunset clause. And I think instead of doing the amount of monies that we're asking for now, I would say, let's cut it in half. Give the opportunity, let's get a chance to look at it, see how it works, uh, and then come back when the sunset clause comes up. Then we can say whether, hey, it's good, let's increase it, or let's stop it. So, I, that's, that is where I'm at with this, with this program.
Okay, any other comments? I mean, very similar to many of the comments that are, are public made, yes. And I, and I, and I think that we've got a lot of that noted that needs to have further discussion.
And, and the thing, the thing that we have, how ma-, I, I mean, just as a show of hands, the people that are here, who actually own the building that they, that they have? Okay? See, there's some, there's, it's about half and half, there's some that don't own the building. And so consequently, you know, the person that owns their building is not here to, to, to represent that, that particular building. So, you know, there, there's, there's, as far as I'm concerned, there's too many, there's, there's too many variations going on, and I, and I'm, and I'm not satisfied with that. So, I just think it, if nothing else, let's delay it, let's, let's, you know, let's not rush into this thing, and hopefully, we can get some, some answers that, that are pertinent to the situation.
Any other comments from council members? All right, as a review, this would be a vote to move forward with the creation of the district, no taxing, or the-
Not a creation of a district.
The board, with no boundaries, no assessments, so this is the first step of many that all have to come back to the council for any further and future discussions. Yes, sir, Gary?
If you're talking about a sunset clause, how have you determined already that these are gonna be a three-year term, a two-year term? Okay, so we've been talked about that there needs to be one.
Well, we've talked about that, that would be part of what that board now has to bring back to us. back to us.
And who picked the board members?
The mayor did. They, they have been part of a board that's been in existence for many years.
The BID.
The BID, you know, and then...
Just, just curious.
No, and, and then when there's been an opening, if someone's been interested and anybody would be welcome to put their name into the book, we try to keep, we try to keep candidates, possible candidates on hand for all our boards, from BIDs to park board to whatever.
Yeah, just, just curious.
It, it's a point, the board itself was a point, I, I have only appointed one or two of these members. The others have been members, uh, for many years.
From previous BID projects.
From previous BIDs. Uh, I, I, I guess, I know I have appointed one or two new members, but the majority have been previous members from other BID projects and I maybe have already reappointed because they were interested in staying on when their term came up.
Thank you.
Okay?
I just, if I may, all of the board members are listed in the resolution that we're about to vote on, so you know who to contact if you have a comment or a question about anything that, any of these decisions, cause once again, we are not voting on a tax or a boundary or that, none of that is being voted on right now. So when we get done voting, they're on a board, call them and tell them what you think.
Well, don't, but don't call Kevin Anderson.
Yeah. Kevin Johnson.
Kevin Johnson, yeah. So they're officially on the board, so start calling them and telling them what you think. Okay?
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes, I give you, uh, the board is challenged with some, some ideas and some thoughts and, uh, some work as we move forward, if we move, if it moves forward. Alright, thank you. We'll go on to new business.
Anybody who wants to leave is welcome to.
Anybody who's here...
We'll give you a couple of minutes to leave if you'd like.
If you just came for this, or unless you wanna stay for all of it, you're welcome to.
Stick around.
Thank you all for coming, thank you all for voicing your opinions and being part of the process.
You comment about the money, if that's been the case, we're gonna have to write that. We got half the money.
All right, item 13A, appointment of Diane Schiffler to the Senior Center Advisory Board to fill the unexpired term of Colette Hanson.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the appointment of Diane Schiffler to the Senior Center Advisory Board be ratified.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to ratify this appointment. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Voting went out the door with the guests.
We're glad she has problems from time to time.
It makes you feel better, doesn't it?
It does.
Motion passes, brings us up to comments.
Item 13B, comments from the mayor and city council members in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion may be held on this item.
Any council members have any discussion this evening? Yes, sir?
This being my swan song, I would like to once more thank everybody here on the council with me. You've been very patient over the years, been very helpful, you've offered all kinds of good advice and I've listened to some of it, not done much of it. But anyway, I wish you success going forward and certainly the staff that's here, you've just been marvelous. Um, I would recommend to anybody, a, a term or two on the city council is very good experience. I place my being on the city council among the three most important pivotal things that have ever happened in my life, which are being on the council, going to the United States Army and getting married.
Now, you didn't put those in order and I'm glad you didn't. John, it's been a pleasure.
Yes, John.
Thank you for your service, John.
Thank you for your service, sir. Uh, any other comments from councilmen? I have a couple of items I just wanted to comment on. Uh, the city is celebrating National Engineer Week this week. I wanna give a shout out to our own Rick Bogus who happens to be with us and then most of you have seen that we have a new hire within the, the staff, Brandon Lobins, Labens?
Brayden.
Uh, Brayden, Brayden Labens. So I wanted to shout out to you guys, thank you for all you do. I also wanted to remind and just to tag on to what John was commenting on, I wanna remind any residents of Ward's Four in Columbus that does have interest to please forward a resume to me. I have gotten some, I'm certainly interested in some more, uh, but I will be trying to make a decision here, not trying, I will be making a decision here, uh, before our next council meeting. So I certainly do encourage anybody that has any interest to please come forward, uh, and I would certainly entertain your interest. And finally, I wanted to mention what I think is really a neat honor that we or the city received, uh, the city and Central Hispano were selected by Welcoming America to participate in its Rural Welcoming Community Exchange. It's a pretty neat deal and I guess I'd look to Tara and say, you wanna just make a couple of comments, please?
Sure. Yes, um, Centro Hispano Liz, Centro invited me to apply with her to the Rural Welcoming Exchange. It's a, a nationwide and Australia is part of this program. It's, it's ran by a nonprofit group, um, and they've, we received, or we submitted our application in January to be part of this program that basically will help us develop our, our knowledge and our tools, um, to be able to, um, integrate immigrants into our community to make sure that this is a, a friendly and welcoming place for all of our residents. I don't think most people realize it, but 25% of the population in Columbus identifies as an immigrant. So it's obviously very important that we, um, do everything we can for, for any group of residents in the city. We're really excited about it, it's all expenses paid, um, by this foundate or this, um, nonprofit organization and we will have, it's about an eight, nine-month process where we'll learn best practices, we'll, um, bring knowledge back to Columbus and hopefully make some really good improvements about just being a more welcoming and inclusive community.
Awesome, sounds like a wonderful opportunity, looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Alright, let's move on to resolutions.
Right, item 14A, resolution number R23-32, amending Title VI of the Non-Discrimination Plan 2022, section of the Policies and Procedures for Columbus Area Transit.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution, resolution number R23-32 be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R23-32. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14B, resolution number R23-33, approving the grant agreement with Neighbor Works Northeast Nebraska in an amount not to exceed $390,000 for low to moderate housing in Quail Meadows subdivision using economic development funds as recommended by the Citizens Advisory Review Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I would move for the adoption of resolution number R23-33.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R23-33. Any discussion?
Question.
Yes, sir?
How, how are those dollars gonna be used? Are they gonna be used in infrastructure or helping to purchase the properties or...
They're going to be used partially for down payment assistance and partially for infrastructure.
Thank you.
Kelvin with Neighbor Works is here if, if you guys want him to address the council.
Any further questions? We do have Neighbor Works here, any, yes, sir?
On the, um, grant agreement, uh, it says that whereas Neighbor Works tends to develop 70 homes, when you put, when you break them up into how many of each, it's 80.
It's approximate, the, so the, Kelvin, I'll let you address it, but nothing's set in stone with what, which units are planned, that's why.
Kelvin Isaguerre with Neighbor Works Northeast Nebraska, 2554 40th Avenue. First of all, I wanna thank you all for the continued support. Um, you guys have supported Neighbor Works throughout, uh, its affordable housing journey. Uh, so the Quails Meadows one, um, so the income of 390,000 will go to income qualified buyers who will ac, have access to those funds and that's considered 120 area median income that definition is provided to us by HUD, Housing of Urban Development. Um, so there's gonna be 51 single-family homes and those will be for sale, 100% sure. Um, then in addition to that, there would be another 20 townhomes, so those are essentially duplexes, but they will be for sale as well that we called townhomes. And then nine triplexes. Those are kind of up in the air whether or not we're gonna sell those or we're gonna make them rentals. So those may or may not have that down payment assistance access, we're just gonna make them available for either rent or if the funds allow, or if the need is there for people to want to purchase those, then we might do that as well. But as of now, we're planning on making those rentals and it's the potentially 70, um, houses for sale on that point. Any further questions on how that might be used? And it will be used as down payment assistance ranging anywhere from 20,000 down payment assistance to 40,000 depending on the home buyer, uh, and their AMI. So maximum may is 120, but the minimum is not stated, so it could go all the way down to 20% if they can afford it, so.
Alright, any other questions for Kelvin? Thank you, Kelvin.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed Motion passes.
Item 14C, resolution number R23-34, authorizing application and administration of fiscal year 2023 Rural Business Development Grant.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of resolution number R23-34. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R23-34. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14D, resolution number R23-35, approving the agency agreement with Nebraska Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division for grant number 3-31-0019-017-0223 to obtain federal assistance for construction of an eight-place tea hanger.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R23-35 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R23-35. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14E, resolution number R23-36, approving the agreement with Sand Creek Construction Company in the amount of $45,000 for design face services for Gerard Park Tennis and pickleball courts using the design-build policy.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of resolution number R23-36 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R23-36. Any discussion?
I just wanna clarify, um, these things are all in the budget, correct?
Correct.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14F, resolution number R23-37, approving the agreement with the Shimmer Associates Incorporated in the amount of $345,560.33 for the city's portion of construction engineering and inspection services of betterment work for the 23rd Street Reconstruction Project.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the resolution number R2, R23-37 be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R23-37. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14G, resolution number R23-38, selecting the design-build delivery system for the splash pad at Centennial Park and designating city engineer Rick Bogus to serve as the performance criteria developer.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of resolution number R23-38.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R23-38. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passed, meeting adjourned and please go home and enjoy the Creighton-Marquette game.
Yeah.
Yeah.